Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our status update meeting. Today's date is December two, two thousand twenty five. The time is ten AM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarra. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We'll pull number two, and I think it'll be handled in two weeks.
Okay. Item two, this has to do with the jail staffing and overtime. So that will be, what, December sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other changes? Hearing none. Public comment. Anyone wishes to speak? Hearing none. We'll move into our first item. This is the Hayden Law Enforcement Contract. It's a discussion item and has my name next to it. And really, the point of having it on here is to have a little bit more of a formal discussion, not necessarily in a business meeting, unintended, to talk about designating a point person to actually represent the board so that that person and an appointed person with the city council can actually talk about the Hayden, the couple of items they have with the law enforcement agreement so that we can get this baby wrapped up and start working on any of the other issues for the next year. And per our discussion last week, I mentioned that I'd like to be that person. And I've already initiated that conversation with Councilman De Priest, who I believe is going to seek to be that person as well. Any thoughts on that? Okay.
So just a clarification, I never entered into any negotiations, nor did I ever promise anything to any city council. What it was is our discussion back, I think it was in April, had to do with where we were at, where they wanted to go, and that was it. I did not act on behalf of the board, just as a liaison. That was it. So I know it was characterized that I was negotiating on behalf of the board without permission. So I just want to clear that up.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I mean, I just, I know the expression on the mayor's face was unfortunately not on camera, but that's fine. No discuss, no debate, no argument. Okay, we'll move on to item three. This is the helicopter next steps for donation agreement discussion item. And we have Lieutenant Mark Ellis.
Morning Commissioners, Mark Ellis. So I think we're at the stage now that I believe I supplied the policy procedures, all the forms that we are using. That way all of the board or the commissioners can review it. And so I think we've reached a point where I need some guidance as far as a decision whether we're going to go move forward with donating the helicopter to the county or not.
What do you want? What does the sheriff's office want?
The sheriff's office wants it. I mean, we've shown in the last, you know, fourteen months or so that we utilized it, that we saved multiple lives. We use it for multiple investigations. We use it to make a difference, and it was a force multiplier. Plus, we've had people that are now actually applying to the sheriff's office just to be a part of this air unit. So it's had a positive impact on the sheriff's office. Our preference would be to continue to use it. The nonprofit is willing to pay for the insurance. So the cost really would be the same ten thousand dollars that we were paying Spokane County, as well as the deputy's cost to actually utilize it. So it's really no different with Spokane County when we had a deputy on top of their helicopter as well.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Duncan, have you been working with this at all?
Yes, I do have a draft donation agreement. It has a couple tweaks that are needed. So after those tweaks, I was going to send it to the board, and then it would need to go to the outside council for review. So I just want to make sure that it's, and it'll also be reviewed consecutively with the nonprofit. So.
You know, has anyone expressed any concerns about the fact that once you own an asset, it actually changes the liability structure a little bit?
Yeah, we've discussed it, yes.
Okay. You know, one of the things that was in my packet was this document here, Cootney County Regional Air Support Unit Operations Manual. And you and I have talked about this. I've never seen it before, but we talked about it. And, you know, here's the, here's the way I kind of look at it, and this is why I think it's important that we really think this through, okay? You know, it's one thing when somebody has the liability, and I'm going to use a loan as an example, right? And we promised to give that person some money for their loan, right? And, you know, if we don't give them the money, you know, the loan is their problem. But when that person says, would you co-sign a loan with me? That changes the nature of the liability significantly, right? Because not only are you still giving that person some money, but now if that person fails to do, perform what they're supposed to do, you are responsible for that loan. And that's in essence what's being asked here, is that we're going to take this asset into the county, put it on its books, and we're going to be responsible for it. And if something happens, and we know these things happen, right? I mean, we had a gentleman who ran for office recently and was on a helicopter, and it crashed, and he didn't make it. And it certainly has happened in other jurisdictions. And so, you know, for me, I take this very seriously, and I'm looking through this document. And I guess the first question I have is, is this document reflective of Cootney County Sheriff's Office operations?
It's reflective off of our current procedures. And so, yes, it's been reviewed by the sheriff and the undersheriff and approved at their level.
Okay, so they've, they've, they've seen it and they've approved it?
Yes.
Okay. Has legal seen this?
We've sent it to legal.
So legal would also like the outside council to review it.
Okay, because these are the things that kind of stood out to me a little bit, and I just, I want to make sure that, you know. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because in my entire career, this is what it's all about. You have to have policy manuals, and then you have to show you're following the policy manuals, especially if something doesn't work right. And I will tell you that there are companies out there that either have poorly written policy manuals or have policy manuals and they don't follow, follow them, and they get sued and they lose a lot of money. And so that's kind of the world I came from, is that if you have these documents, then you have to follow them, and you have to document that you're following them, okay? And so I'm looking through here, and under unit organization, it's got lieutenant, which, who would that be?
It's currently me.
Okay, the sergeant?
Sergeant Ryan Miller.
Okay, so he would be the unit sergeant?
Correct.
Right. Chief pilot, who would that be?
Right now, it is David Cummings, David Cummings right now.
And does he work for the county?
He does not.
Okay, so, but this is the county's book, so I just want to make sure that if he doesn't work for the county, that we have to make sure that he is, you know, top notch.
There'll be a volunteer agreement.
But, but we also have to sign for their work too.
Yes.
The county has to sign for it because it's the county's asset.
Correct, and we, we go through a vetting process as well as a background process for our pilots.
Training officers, who are they?
That would be one of our tactical flight officers.
Okay, so we have a person for that. A maintenance officer, do we have a maintenance officer on staff?
The nonprofit does, who's responsible for the maintenance of the helicopter.
Okay, so that person is outside the county. And then the chief pilot is outside. Now, I don't know the answers to these. Maybe this has already been discussed with council. But, you know, it lists mechanics, pilot in command, tactical flight officer, pilot selection, tactical flight officer. And I think some of the numbers on here are, may not be accurate. So as I'm going through this, and I just, these are the things that stand out to me, and I just want to make sure that this is something that, you know, the county is doing. The lieutenant is responsible.
What page?
Page eight. The lieutenant is responsible for overseeing all aspects of unit operations. And that includes, item E, overall responsibility for both the ASU, which I presume is Air Support Unit Maintenance Program, as well as the ASU Training Program. So who does the maintenance?
That'd be our chief mechanic.
Okay, and he's on staff?
He is a staff member for the nonprofit.
Okay, all right. And.
So there'll be a, an agreement for the county to have the nonprofit actually perform all the maintenance.
Mm-hmm, okay. And, but it's our asset, so we have to make sure that it was done correctly. So who in the county is going to be signing off on that?
That would be me.
That would be you, okay. All right. And then the sergeant, Air Support Unit, you said was Sergeant Ryan?
Correct.
Okay, and it says in this document that they'll supervise all ASU personnel, equipment, and maintenance, coordinate training with the chief pilot for personnel as required, ensure all FAA mandated training parameters are met, which, is he being trained on that right now?
He has been trained on it, yes.
Okay, good. And so is all of these items that he's doing, ensure all crew currency requirements are in compliance, ensure department law enforcement training is conducted, that's all being documented?
It is all being documented. Each tactical flight officer and pilot has their own file that we maintain.
Okay, but all of the, the overall training is being documented outside of the flying?
Absolutely. There is a training program for every tactical flight officer and pilot, and they are not allowed to be solo until we sign off on that.
Okay, and it says all, ensure all forms of documentation are completed, and where are those?
Those are currently in a safe in the hangar.
Okay. Is that something that we would be able to look at?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason I say this is because if something bad were to happen, and that's how I'm looking at it, like the worst case scenario, every bit of this documentation is going to be subject to scrutiny. And, you know, if people, you know, you're responsible for it, and that's fine. If the board says yes to it, you know, then obviously the sheriff's office is one hundred percent responsible for this program, maintaining it and, and all the, the good and bad that comes with it.
Correct.
Okay. Establish, assess, and inspect flight standards and unit training standards with training staff. Who are the training staff?
So every member of the unit is considered a trained staff because they are all designated as different roles, and they all partake in training each other. We have several tactical flight officers. Their primary responsibility is training new tactical flight officers, and then the chief pilot is responsible for training new pilots.
Okay, good. Safety officers. Maintain a viable aviation and industrial safety program for the air support unit. Assist the unit sergeant in the formation and implementation of safe operating procedures, and coordinate the air support unit safety committee. Who is that?
Currently, right now, the committee would be Sergeant Ryan Miller, myself, and then one of the TFOs is on that committee. The entire team ever, every year goes to a safety stand down where we spend the entire ship doing nothing but safety stand with Spokane County and King County.
Okay, and all of that's documented?
It is.
Good. Pilot selection. The following are the minimum qualifications for applicants to the air support unit, commanding officer recommendation. Who's the commanding officer?
I am the commanding officer.
Okay. All right. And just a couple other things that stood out to me. Post-flight procedure, any flight restricting condition to the aircraft must be reported to the unit mechanics.
What page?
Eighteen. Unit mechanics, maintenance officer, or unit sergeant as soon as practical. And then what happens after that? How does that process work with respect to a problem with the helicopter? Notifying a mechanic who is on staff with the nonprofit?
So what we do is we have a squawk form, which is basically reporting a maintenance issue. That squawk is put in two places. It's a form that's filled out, it's put into the maintenance manual, sorry, and it's also written on our whiteboard in our hangar. So depending on the squawk, he can either ground us, or he can still be flyable. What happens is Sergeant Ryan Miller is responsible. As the unit supervisor, we'll contact our maintenance, our chief mechanic, who will then address the squawk. The squawk is filled out, completed in both the logbook as well as the form, and both of those are maintained.
Okay. And, but that's all at the nonprofit level?
It's kind of, like I said, Sergeant Ryan Miller is responsible for the actual, making sure that the mechanic is contacted and the forms are completed.
Yeah.
The pilots are also responsible that every time they fly, the pilots and tactical flight officers, there's a form they must fill out that basically says it would go, no go. It takes three signatures to go on every flight. So what they do is they check the squawk, make sure the helicopter's in good order, and then it's pre-inspected before every flight and after every flight.
Okay. And then, kind of moving forward to twenty nine, NVG currency. Do we, do we do night flights?
We do.
With NVG, night vision goggles?
We do.
Okay, so who actually signs off on the, the requirement for that, which has to be done two calendar months prior to the actual flight?
So what we do is we have, first off, our chief pilot is a NVG instructor, and so he is allowed to sign off on those. Every six months, the actual night visions themselves are sent down to Texas where they are recertified by the company down there that we purchased from. And that is done by our night vision goggle safety officer.
Okay. And that person is on staff?
He is.
Okay. So that's the big thing here, is that there has to be someone who is an employee of the county who is overseeing this and signing off on it.
Yes, essentially, everything you've been talking about, I am ultimately responsible for, and then above me will be undersheriff Nelson and the sheriff.
Sure. And then the one other thing here is a safety program manual. I didn't get that in the documentation. Do we have that?
The safety program manual is kind of outlined inside of the policy manual as far as, it is considered a safety policy manual, as well as the, there's the form I sent you that has the weather conditions, it has the, make sure the squawk box is checked, all that kind of stuff, and that is our safety.
Of that single form?
Yes.
From a spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. All right, because the way it reads here, it reads a little bit more than a piece of paper.
You have to encompass the entire policy as the safety manual. Everything in that policy manual is to ensure that it's a safe operation and addresses that.
Okay. All right, it doesn't say that, it says that one exists to outline the unit's philosophy, so it doesn't say that this is part of it. I trust in all the maintenance procedures, you know.
Looking for us, our chief, our chief mechanic is actually the designated evaluator, so he actually evaluates other mechanics to get them signed off, so he is top notch, and does a great job for us.
Okay, and then the only other question I would have, and I don't know if this is for council, is that typically when you pay to have work done on, on a vehicle, right, there's, there's, there's an exchange of value there, right? And so there's an obligation that whoever's doing the work is, you know, certified and meets all the, you know, requirements, and that you've given money in exchange for that work to be done. And so, you know, there's a responsibility component here. When they do it for free, the, you know, meaning it's volunteer, it's from a, a nonprofit, how does that change the dynamic? Does, at that point, does that mean that, you know, there was, that they're not necessarily obligated to stand behind the work in case something happens? Because.
We have two parts here. So if we're doing any major work on the helicopter, we do use a paid service. And so what the, mainly our mechanic does is he makes sure it's up to date every time, does minor repairs, he is evaluating the books, he's making sure that anytime we pay a outside mechanic to do work on it, that it's done properly. And that's his overall job as far as chief mechanic slash safety officer. Recently, we just had a large amount of work done with the new camera install on it, and that was a paid service that we entered into a contract to have done. So anything that's done, whether we're replacing an engine component, that will be sent down to a paid service. So, yes, we are using paid services to do it, so we do have a contract with them. Our chief mechanic, right now, is volunteer basis. I am under no illusion that that could go away any time, and we'd have to pay some mechanics that we have on standby.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, it, it just, it's an important question, I think, when it comes to, you know, who's ultimately responsible.
Ultimately responsible is the pilot. I'll tell you that. And that's the pilot's responsibility before every flight is to make sure it's an operational. And that is part of their training programs to make sure they can inspect the helicopter, it's in good working order. They are the person in charge during any flight. And so they do do a good job because ultimately their lives are at hand.
And, and that opens the door then to the same type of question because they're volunteers, right? So we're responsible for the volunteers in essence. So we have to, you know, figure out, well, how are we going to manage to that in case something goes bad?
And that goes on me then, as far as vetting process, doing our background process of looking at their resumes, make sure they actually have the expertise, knowledge, and know-how to get the job done. And so that's what we spend a fair amount of time, is just checking their background, checking to make sure that they are capable of the program. And that's why, you know, Dave Cummings, our chief pilot right now, has over twenty thousand hours of flight time. And that's a huge amount. So we, that's a good qualifier right there to show how good a pilot you are.
I, I agree, and that's the, actually the comforting part of the whole process. The part that always concerns me a little bit is not what I know, but what I don't know. And I don't know FAA rules. I don't know what it's like to own a helicopter. But I do know that when they crash, the attorneys get involved, and there's oftentimes many millions of dollars in settlements, right? And those settlements don't just happen for no reason, right? Because they're always trying to find fault. And we've seen this on TV, you know, when, when something bad happens, all of a sudden, you know, there's just lots of litigation flying, and, you know, people trying to make sure that their i's are dotted and t's are crossed, hopefully beforehand, right? And, and that's the concern, okay, is that in essence, the board is being asked to take on a liability that we don't have right now. We don't have it. Not, not in the same way. It certainly was very different with Spokane's helicopter. Because whatever happens with Spokane's helicopter, that's between Spokane and whoever wants to fight them. And then, of course, we just have to deal with the staffing side of, of any of our staff that may have been on the helicopter during an incident, right?
And so we're looking at the pros, this is what, I guess, it comes to commissioners, what you have to do is the pros and cons. Do we want to wait an hour and a half for Spokane County to respond, or do we want, or is it in twenty minutes? Do we want to be able to control over to fly when we need to be able to, or do we want Spokane to dictate that? I know for our sheriff's office, we have had some issues in the past where we said this would be beneficial for us to have. And so I can outline all those, outline all those, kind of like I did. But we believe that the pros are far outweighing the cons right now.
And, you know, when it comes to individuals making those decisions, like if I make a decision with my business of what I'm willing to accept, if I want ice in front of the door where someone walks into and what could possibly happen, because it'll come out of my pocket, that generally is okay. But if something happens here, whose pocket does the money come out of?
Well, if you.
It won't come out of your pocket, right?
It won't be mine anymore, no.
And it won't be my money, right? It'll be the county taxpayers' money. And so we're in essence, you know, charged with making sure that we not only manage that money correctly, but that we manage the liability correctly too. And so, you know, I think it's easy for us to all say, yeah, let's, and I'm not against this. What I'm just saying is that we, it shouldn't be, you know, kind of brushed off a little bit, that the, the liability here is huge.
Liability is going to increase, there's no doubt about that. What's the cost, though? If we save a young child's life, is it worth it?
Well, you know, now, you bring up an interesting point, because, you know, there is a guy who said that if we just pass one more gun law, and it saves a life, is it worth it? His name was Joe Biden. You know, so that's kind of a Democrat talking point, and I'm not trying to argue with you on that. But when that gets thrown at me, you know, I look at it being a very political statement in a sense, because I don't believe you want more gun laws, right?
I do not.
And I don't. So, you know, and we know that as a result of that, perhaps someone may die, right, according to this person. So I'm not sure I would buy that as an argument necessarily, because if something bad happens, believe me, all the good things that, that a program does kind of goes out the window if something bad happens, because people are going to start pointing fingers and saying, you know, that this person should have done that, that person should have done this. Why did the board approve this? They knew this liability. I mean, that's how it typically works, you know, and, I mean.
I have to disagree a little bit with you on that, because you can say there's more liability having a patrol car, right? Because that increases the liability, you're going to crash a vehicle. But is it a tool that helps out law enforcement? Helps them get there faster to the call? Can it save a life? Hundred percent.
Well, you know, I, I can't disagree with you in the sense that there's not liability, but I can certainly, I know in Sacramento, there was an issue where a helicopter went down and, and a deputy or two died. And, and the payout was, the payout was in the millions and millions of dollars, I mean, millions.
Sure.
And I don't think this county has ever gone through something like that.
I, I don't know of any, no.
Yeah, I don't know of any either. So that, to me, is, is the, you know, we're here, and now we're talking about going up to here. And so I think that it's just really important that we make sure that everything is good. I don't know what I don't know, right? I mean, is there anyone up here who's an FAA expert?
Getting there.
Yeah, well, you know, would, would you think you could qualify for a major airline to sign off on some things? Because typically, they want people who've got a lot of experience, you know, I mean, this is.
That's why we have people of a lot of experience. And so.
Yes, but they don't work for us.
A little bit into the weeds right now, where you say you want the sheriff's office to, you know, basically run it. I think the board is now looking at the very fine-tailed stuff. So either you want the sheriff's office to have the faith that we contacted the FAA, and that we've gone through all of this, which we have.
Well, like I said, you know, you and I had a conversation, and I asked you about a policy manual. I've never seen one until this week. Okay, so I've never seen that. I've never seen the documents that are in a safe somewhere to make sure.
Have you seen the, the policy manual for the dive team?
Well, we, we had the dive team all along, and the dive team.
We haven't always had, we had it to start it at some point.
Okay, but it's been a long since, since I've been here, and if something happens on a, on a dive, divers don't crash out of the sky.
Sure.
Right?
What I'm just saying is if you want to see every policy manual, it's been in existence.
Well.
Because you haven't seen it doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
Right, and again, this one's going to go through some more scrutiny. So it's not said and done right now.
Well, I'm fine with having the right attorneys look at it, you know.
And I guess we're at the point right now is I just need to know. And I guess we're at the point right now is I just need to know the direction from the three commissioners, because we have put a lot of money, a lot of time into it. The board members are now asking, because for anybody that's been down for a year of not being used, there's been many times they could use it, and I think the, the entire feeling is, is we need some direction, because if we're just spinning our wheels right now, not going anywhere, it's time to pull the plug. If it's something that you guys think that you actually want to move forward with, then I think spending the money to have the outside attorney actually review it is worthwhile. But if it's not something the board wants, then let's call it quits. We just need direction at this point.
Well, I think it's not about whether, I mean, from my perspective, and I'm just to vote on this, it's not that I want or don't want, per se, overall. I, I like the idea of the county having a helicopter to do the very things that you say, right? The, the problem here is that I don't know what the liability is. I don't know what I'm saying yes to, okay? And so without understanding that information, it's hard for me to make a good decision, right? And so, you know, you're saying yes, you know, every, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, if I understand you correctly, right?
So isn't that the liability question's being covered?
Yes, okay. Are you going to represent the county if something bad happens, or are we going to get-
I'm not going to be the representation.
That's right. So we need someone who knows what they're talking about, who's done this before, who's seen all these different situations, to make sure that we don't have gaps in what we think is good, but may not be good.
And this is why Darren is working with outside counsel.
Yes.
Kind of my thoughts, when you buy a car, do you buy the insurance before you buy the car?
Well, you know, insure, cars don't fall out of the sky. I mean, I'm sorry, but, you know, you, if you have insurance prior, then you're by, for three days, you're automatically covered with it. You know, when you buy a brand-new car, you have three days to notify your insurance company.
So what else do we need to go forward? So next steps would be, like I said, donation agreement.
Yeah, the attorney, looking at, I'd like someone to look at all of our documentation. Because again, I think that it's safe to say that we're taking on a liability that we don't have right now.
We, I just didn't want to go spend the money if there wasn't a second vote to move forward with this program.
Well, how much money are we looking at?
Well, probably a couple thousand.
A couple thousand dollars just to review the documentation and everything?
Possibly. I mean, he wouldn't even give us a quote yet, because he wanted to make sure that we're going forward with it, so-
And who's he?
I can get a quote, the outside attorney.
Okay, I, I would say get a quote. I don't know, Mark, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I think firefighting is fascinating.
Mike, sure.
And I used to do that. We fly, flew around, flying around in helicopters, and it was really exhilarating. But I cannot get my mind out of it, free stuff, liability, rain on the parade, and there may be handy uses, but with a donation, I, I don't think we need to do this.
So the donation agreement has in there that Cooney County's responsibility is still the $10,000. So if there were an opportunity or time that Cooney County's financial responsibility would increase, the Board of Commissioners can shut it down, and they can say no to the additional finances. But the way the donation agreement is written, the nonprofit is supplying-
But I'm, I'm not looking at it that way. I don't know that we need one.
That's fine. I'm just letting you know that the financial portion of it, it's, it's spelled out that if we're required to have more, we can say no, and the-
Commissioner Everline, so do you refer to the sheriff's office for law enforcement expertise? Or do you think you have the expertise in that field?
I'm looking at it as a commissioner, okay? You're looking at stuff as a cop.
I am.
With the helicopter. So it's, there's two different things. One, when the, when the crap hits the fan, it's the commissioners that are going to take the heat. And the commissioners are the ones that make the, that's, that's why we have county commissioners.
That's fine, I understand. You're just saying that you don't understand the need, and I'm telling you, the sheriff's office has said there is a need. And they're the ones that are actually executing law enforcement in this county.
Why does somebody give somebody a donation for a helicopter?
Because the community cares about-
Or, or they want to get out of it.
Or they want to get out of it.
That's what I'm looking at. That's how I see it as a, as a businessman. Somebody wants to get rid of some piece of garbage that they have, and so all of a sudden, great, this sucker took it.
That's not the way this is. We would keep operating underneath the 501(c)(3) and not make the donation agreement at all, except for FAA rules don't allow the sheriff's department to operate the helicopter in the way that, that they see fit.
You got my answer.
Okay.
So the questions I want to understand is, is the potential liability, and, you know, how well our documentation is at this point in time by having council review it, just to make sure that we are not missing something. And that, you know, it needs to be looked at from a worst-case scenario. And I'd also like to understand where the insurance company might try to bail out of this. And this is another area where insurance companies, if they discover you're not doing what you say you're going to do, or they feel like they have been misled, they do not have a contractual obligation to spend the money to defend you.
I can get the exclusions.
So we need to understand that, because it's, it requires us to be at a higher state of awareness and diligence the second that this asset becomes a county asset.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Not with this.
Lieutenant Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Have you been a part of these conversations at all with any attorneys?
No.
I think you should be.
You, you have, when we met with-
We made the one phone call, yeah.
Yeah.
Office call.
Okay, then you have been. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item four, biannual commissioner redistricting. And it's a discussion item, and I have a Dave Christensen.
Dave Christensen, for the record, GIS manager here at the county.
ASO grade for the record, elections director here at the county.
So today, we're bringing you the biannual commissioner redistricting evaluation, if you will. So every two years, by state code, we need to come and look at the commissioner districts. I believe the way the code is written, it says that we should balance these out as reasonably as possible between the three commissioner districts. So to start, I'd like to explain to you how I generated the, the population numbers. So the US Census data only produced, basically, the last solid data that they produced was in 2020. So we have solid data from that. Then they come out each year with an estimate. They didn't have the 2025 estimate, so I went back two years, averaged those last two years in order to handle this year's estimate. So what I did was, we took the original census data, the blocks that they had, and we apply those populations to the actual structures that existed at that time. So back in 2020, I applied all of the population, so we got a, a number of people living in each house. And we, we minimized the error by, by going ahead and recalculating their population onto our structure point. And so then what I did was, we took the structures that we added into our database since 2020, and we only applied the, the average population that we've increased since 2020 to those structures. So if you were in a neighborhood like inside Coeur d'Alene Place, that didn't really have any development, you may not see, you wouldn't see any change, because we didn't have any houses. And, and we do that so that we don't put extra error into already existing locations. So we, we try to map the, the population growth where it is. So that's how we've generated the numbers, and we came up with the estimated population for this year of 191,100 people in the county. In doing our analysis, I usually like to have everything within plus or minus 3%. So we have a 6% range, it's just kind of a number I've been using over the years. When I ran the initial set, we were really close this year to those numbers. There's no real rhyme or reason to that 3%, it's just something that I've kind of used. So I'm coming here today saying, you know, the numbers are fairly close, and we could potentially just wait another two years and revisit this in two years when we have to again. If we do want to make a change, I've got a recommendation here for a change to be made that will get a little bit closer to the percentages. Regardless of whether we make that change or not, there are a couple map corrections that we'd like to, to have made regardless. Those are going to be on Exhibit 1, A, Zone A over there, and then on the other Exhibit 2, both of those. So the Exhibit 2, what you're seeing here is simply, we had a mapping error when we drew the shorelines. The shoreline was drawn incorrectly, and so when I originally made the map a couple years back, these parcels on the south side of the river got stuck into the wrong district, so we want to correct that. On the Exhibit 1 over there, the A, that was, is simply a utility, a vista, a piece of property that for whatever reason got moved into the district, and ASO would like to have that line drawn straight. We get a lot of questions on that. But it doesn't affect anybody, any people. So with that, I open it up to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just on item C, you would want to make that one, so really, item B is our only one that would be something that-
B and C would both be if you choose to actually adjust the population, because that, those are both not just corrections, but actual movements of, of people.
Okay, so A really is the one that you want, and then if we choose not to make any other adjustments, then that's fine.
And then these two, the Exhibit 2.
The river.
Yes, correct, A, and then the Exhibit 2.
Okay.
Parcels. And I, there's one, on, on the Exhibit 2, there's a single lot with one house, and then there's, was a little island.
Yeah.
And I believe that had three houses on it.
Okay.
So we're talking only four structures for those map adjustments.
Yeah, I, I don't see the reason why to go through a bunch of changing for people. I think just changing the A and then the 2 river areas would be sufficient, but that's just my-
Commissioner Everline?
Yeah, just wait until Post Falls floods the prairie.
Well, it doesn't sound like there's enough of a change, enough of a difference to, to warrant that.
I don't feel so.
You know, I think the couple of changes you want to make make sense.
Okay, well, then we'll go ahead and put that documentation together and bring it back to you in the meeting in January, when it's actually supposed to be scheduled, if that's okay with you guys.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, next up is item 5. It's an advisory board applications discussion item, and Sarah Masters.
We went another four weeks, got a few more applicants in a couple of the different boards. So just need direction as far as who you would like to appoint, or interview, or how you'd like to move forward.
Thoughts on that?
I think my initial things have changed. I don't, can you just point out the, I think there was only two, maybe three, who-
Three.
Three that changed?
So you have an additional person for the Natural Resource Advisory Board.
Okay.
That's a board with three openings, and you have three applicants. And then we got another one for the Planning and Zoning God to.
But it looks like three of the people are already in cities.
Yes.
Three of the applicants.
Yes.
And we can't have more than two who are in a city in a seven-person board.
In a seven-person board, correct. Do we want to just start at the top with the first page for airport, and you can let me know who you would like to appoint or interview? And once I have two out of three, we can move forward?
Well, this is all we have for airport, right? There's no additional-
Right, and-
Correct. You got, you did get one person who's currently a alternate who put in as well. So there are two openings and two current applicants who are reapplying for their positions. And then one of the alternates is applying for a full-time position as well.
Yeah, so I, I would say with the Hayden representative, we're going to have to wait to hear from them and see who their new Hayden representative will be, and they may choose to keep that person as their representative, so we can, we can ask them.
Well, so are you suggesting just keep him as is for now?
Yeah. Yeah, unless you want to consider the alternate for the other vacant position.
Which one's that?
Airport.
And what's the other vacant one?
So we have two vacancies, the, the top two.
Paula Run.
And then the alternate has applied for a solid opening, for a permanent, a voting opening, I guess I should say. So it's just a matter of if you want. I, I'm fine with keeping it as is, and then just finding out from Hayden who they want as their representative.
It likely will change, ma'am, so I don't think, I mean, Commissioner Everline, your thoughts on that?
It's probably fine.
Okay, so then I would say then bring this one forward when you find out who Hayden wants, and we'll just bring it for the new appointment and the reappointment.
I mean, the Fair Advisory Board, one, one opening, one person.
Is the Fair next? I, I rearranged all mine.
We can do, just let me know what, what you want to talk about, and we can go to that. The Fair, there's one person.
And that's just an alternate, yeah.
He is an alternate.
Because it, the even years is when the, the voting members come up.
Historic Preservation Advisory Board.
Well, so do I have two for the alternate for the Fair?
I'm fine with keeping it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same with the Preservation Advisory Board.
Yes.
Three positions, three applicants.
Yep, and the third, a brand-new applicant is welcomed by the commission. They are already using her skills.
Natural Resources Advisory Board, it looks like three positions, three people.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind interviewing the, the third person, we just haven't interviewed him before, so if we have a second, we can do that. If not, I can just interview him myself.
Natural Resource Advisory Board.
Is there a second for interviewing him?
I don't need to, unless Commissioner Everline wants to. And that's Todd Hoffman. He's new? He's a new applicant.
How long have the other people been in there?
Well, frankly, it's three positions that are open for this board.
And two reappointments.
And, I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, two reappointments and then an opening.
Well, there's three people applying in three positions.
Yes, correct.
So there's no, there's no one competing for any positions.
I guess that, that just tells us that, go for it.
You want to bring him in? He's, he's on the Planning and Zoning application as well.
He's on Aquifer Protection.
Is it Aquifer Protection?
Yeah, but he doesn't meet the qualification of the opening.
Why is that?
Because it's for an irrigation, an irrigation district, and he does not belong to-
He's applying as a citizen consumer.
So you're, so there's no citizens that are up for an opening this year?
There is, and if you want to look at replacing the person who's been on there since the inception, we could do that. I don't recommend it, but she fills a huge need and does all the edible aquifers for schools and for education.
See, I, I kind of think it's good to rotate a little bit. I mean, she's been on since 2007.
Which one's that?
That's the Aquifer Protection District Advisory Board. It's probably hard to see that, because you're, you're top, I mean, that's, it's pretty hard to see that.
I would say so.
Yeah, but these are the three positions, four applicants. But this person could only go for that position. The other two would have to be reappointed, because they have, they meet specialized criteria.
Yep. Are you thinking about appointing him to both advisory boards then?
I don't know. I was just thinking about, for the Aquifer Protection District.
That's a pretty important thing.
Mm-hmm. Very smart person, scientific background, very thoughtful. Very smart person, scientific background, very thoughtful.
Do you know him?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in fact, he contacted me and asked me if he could apply for it, and I said, "Go ahead and apply for it."
Then, then, yeah, I would like to interview him then, if you know him.
Bring him in.
Okay. Am I bringing him in for Aquifer, or am I bringing him in for Natural Resource?
Well, if you bring him in for one, I guess we could talk to him about both.
Okay, so do we want to approve the other two people for the Natural Resource?
That's fine with me.
Well, there's no other applicants, so I don't think there's any way around it.
Okay, I just have to have two for, okay. For Aquifer Protection, do you want to approve the two that are representatives of the specialties?
Sure.
There's no one else applying, so...
That makes it easy.
Parks and Waterways, there's two positions, two applicants.
I'm fine with both of those.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Mark, unless you have anyone that you want to talk to, most of these boards don't have any extra applicants to choose from. They're generally people who are reapplying, that's a stay on board.
Been like that for years.
So the only one we have, I think, is the Aquifer Protection District, and then Planning and Zoning.
So for Noxious Weeds, we have three vacancies and one applicant. Are the board okay moving forward with that applicant?
Yes.
Otherwise, we'll have three vacancies.
And same with Snowmobile.
Okay, so that leaves Planning and Zoning.
Yep. She's good. Yeah, Planning and Zoning is the probably the most critical one.
Yeah, and so the first one did reapply? For some reason, I thought he was not going to reapply.
There were two others that chose not to reapply.
Oh, gotcha.
We had three vacancies, and two decided not to return.
Okay. I wouldn't mind interviewing all four of them, even though the one is on there.
So he's our only county representative? So he's in the city of Worley, but he's a county resident, so the board needs county residents, just so you have that in the back of your mind.
Sure, so then we can, we don't have anybody to appoint, then, if all three of these are cities.
Well, you have the top applicant.
Okay.
The applicant at the top is reapplying, and he is a county resident.
Right, I got that part, but I thought we already had two city people who are not up for.
Correct.
Oh, we already have two? I thought we only had one. If we have two, then it's moot.
Yep.
You have one from Court of Lane, and then you have one from a shared area of impact. So you've got one.
Okay, so we can have two cities and one area of impact.
You can, I think you can only have two from the city, because you can only have one-third.
One-third from the cities, not more than one-third. And then at least half of the members must reside outside the boundaries of any city areas of impact, so that's just for the county people. So, I'm sorry, you said we do have two people?
No, you have one from the city of Court of Lane.
All right, so we have three applicants that could go for the city slot.
Okay, so you're saying we have one person that's in the...
You have one from the city.
Yes, and then one in a...
A shared area of impact, and the rest are all county.
Okay, so the shared area of impact, that does not count as our city person.
So that's where I put that portion down below.
No, it says explicitly reside within an incorporated city.
Okay.
Of 1,500 or more.
So you can pick the county person who is reapplying, if you choose so, and then one of these three applicants residing in a city.
Okay, I guess bring them all three in, and I'll just contact the one who's reapplying. I just have some questions.
Okay, do other commissioners want to interview the reapplying applicant, or...
Well, if we can line them all up to go, sure. Let's bring them in.
So we'll interview all four? Okay.
Maybe we can get them all at the same time, if we're lucky.
Okay.
It's possible.
Anything else on the Advisory Board Applications?
Nope.
Hearing nothing. We'll move on to Item 6, County Property Appraisal and Sale, Hayden Lake, and Commissioner Duncan.
Yes, and we may need to go into executive session. Essentially, the question is, is the board satisfied with the appraisal, and do we want to go ahead and put it for sale in accordance with Idaho Code?
Any thoughts on that?
Let's look into it.
I mean, we have a summary here.
Mm-hmm.
And when you say put it for sale, is this auction, or is this...
Yes, auction.
Okay.
Yep, yep, it'll have to go for auction.
So this is basically giving us a minimum?
Yes, correct.
What we could sell it for.
Yep.
Doesn't mean that we have to sell it if we get bids that come below it.
Right.
The question is, do we have to sell it if we get bids coming above that?
Well, that'd be probably executive question for, for Dave, but I don't think so.
Is there any, any reason why we would want to hold on to this? Because I think there was a reason why we even looked at getting it appraised.
Yeah, if you want to talk about it, but I don't think there's a reason to hold on to it. I think it's a huge liability.
No, good morning, Commissioners. Craig Davidson for the record. Director Callahan's out today, and you're correct. We've actually entertained the Highway District and actually Parks and Waterways to see if this could be a use of property for them, and both denied any constructive use of that parcel. That's why we went through this process, and Mr. Vogel gave us the lengthy, much-awaited appraisal now, and I broke out an executive summary, kind of gave you the ballpark figures of the 15 comps in the area around that portion of the lake.
Okay. Given what I know, I don't have any problem proceeding with a sale. Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
Nope, I'm fine.
Commissioner Eberlein?
We got to go into executive session.
We don't need to, unless you have specific questions about the appraisal.
Is it a buildable lot?
It is a buildable lot, Commissioner. They do have some challenges on the lot. There's power lines that run through it for, obviously, a utility company, but it is a buildable lot, and, you know, they'll have a building envelope that they'll have to, obviously, entertain, but steep slopes, but nevertheless, it can be a good home site.
Well, if we don't need it, why are we going to keep it?
Yeah, that's why I say let's proceed forward with it.
We've got lots of other stuff that needs stops.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have some direction on that. All right, next up, Item 7, Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board Dissolution Mediation. Commissioner Duncan?
Yes, mediation starts tomorrow, and so I just wanted to make sure the board was on the same page, and we have information from our attorney that I want to go through real quick, because there's a couple of things that, again, I want to make sure that three of us are on the same page. So if you wanted to call for public comment, I'd be happy to get us into executive session.
We can do that. We'll just go right to public comment. Come on down.
Ron Hartman for the record. The topic's a helicopter agreement. I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions behind, besides just liability. What happens to the cost when free help quits? You guys don't have any idea what that's going to cost to replace them. There'll be an increase in headcount in the county on top of it, and I just have a gut feeling that if you do take this over, the free help's going to dry up real quick. To me, this sounds like a transit, walking into something that's just going to grow like a cancer. And to me, the risk is huge here compared to the benefits. I, and as a taxpayer, I don't want this obligation. It's, when stuff falls out of the sky, the litigation goes through the roof. It, I just, I don't think you guys have enough information to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else wish to speak? Anyone on the telephone? Hearing none? Okay, well, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I move that way, entering into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061D.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Tari?
Aye. 11:16, I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
So be it.
I move we exit executive session with staff to proceed as discussed.
Second?
Commissioner Eberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Okay. 11:16, meeting adjourned.